Seven PM on September 11th, which I would like.
This is Liz. I cannot see anyone.
All the videos.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. It being Thursday, September 11th, which I would like just to take a moment to acknowledge this date. Thank you. We call the planning board meeting to begin. Please note this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised replay by Born TV. If anyone is audio or visual recording, please acknowledge at this time.
Hello, yeah, Lynn Sullivan from the Board of Enterprise.
Hi, you.
Yeah.
Thank you. This is available through the Zoom meeting. Meeting ID is eight six four three zero six four six seven three seven, and the pass code is three two five nine three zero. You could also dial in at one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. All items within the meeting are subject to deliberation and vote. We'll start with the meeting minutes from August 28th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Dan. Any comments? Take a roll call vote. Liz?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And Amanda.
Amanda?
Yes, yes, yes.
And the chair votes yes. Unanimous.
Yeah, he'll be here.
First up on the agenda, approval not required plan, Chapter 41, Section 81P, 190 Main Street. Welcome Brad. Sean, would you like to?
Yes, I've reviewed this project for the A and R, and it complies with all the bylaws for the town of Born.
Great, thank you. Brad?
All right, again, this property is located at 190 Main Street. Sorry, Brabberts Hollow with J.C. Engineering for the record. Again, the property is at 190 Main Street. It's approximately 14,000 square foot lot, developed with a commercial hair salon in the northern portion of the property. The lot itself has frontage on both Main Street and Holt Road. The property owner is looking to subdivide a lot off the rear of the property for future conveyance. It's in the rear of the property, most southern portion of the property, with frontage on Holt Road. This property is located in the downtown core zoning district, which allows lot sizes down to 3,500 square feet. Proposed lot to be subdivided off of the entire lot contains just over 3,700 square feet, has the required frontage. Both lots will meet zoning and both have access or adequate frontage to a public way. If there are any questions on the plan, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions about this? No? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience with any comments or questions? Yes. Would you?
No, I think we're good.
Oh, we're good?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Chapter 41, Section 81P for 190 Main Street.
Second, motion by Dan, second by Jim. Any questions or comments from the board? Any from the audience? Seeing none? Take a roll call vote. Liz?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dan? Corinne? And chair votes yes, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll get your signature.
Let it dry.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is three, five, and seven, Mooring Basin River Road subdivision discussion. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. May I distribute some pictures?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can pull this up on the screen if you would like. We can put this onto the screen.
There it is. It's up. It's up. It's up. How you doing, bossy?
They got it on the screen for you.
Sean? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Did I forget?
Oh, we don't.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? My name is John Fitch. I'm an attorney, and I represent Kathy and Bob Nakashin, who are seated in the audience here tonight. The Nakashins are the owners of lots three, four, five on Plan Book 265, page 12, which was the first exhibit that I handed out. This property is located, as you can see, at the corner of Barlow's Landing Road and Wings Neck Road. I thank you for your time on the agenda tonight. My goal is to simply introduce an idea that I have and get an initial reaction from you. There is litigation in process. My clients have been sued, and so also has the owner of Lot Two. The plaintiffs are the owners of Lot One. The road has never been built. This was a 1972, I think, approval by the planning board, and the plan recites it is subject to a covenant. So that would explain the lots two, three, and, I'm sorry, three, four, and five are undeveloped, as I said, as is the road. If you look at the second paper that I handed out, I used a yellow highlighter to show the location of a fence that was constructed within the roadway, and that fence belongs to the owners of Lot One, and they're the ones who constructed it. As the plaintiffs of this court case, what they are alleging is that they have defeated the rights of my clients, the owners of lots three, four, and five, to construct the road. And it's a case that I don't think they can win, but it is in land court, and it could easily take many years. What I've come up with is an idea that would allow my clients to go forward with using their property without dealing with this litigation. And that would be to ask the, ask the planning board here if they would waive construction of the road in return for lots three, four, and five being merged into one lot. The theory is there'd be no need for a road. It could be a driveway. And the driveway, if you look at the exhibit with the fence on it, the pinch point of that fence with the sideline of the roadway is measured to be 17 feet wide, which would be Barlow's and Wings' ample for a very, very convenient driveway to service a single home. That's the essence of the idea that I would have, and it simply, it would allow my clients to simply ignore the claim that has been submitted in the land court. But it would require a release of the covenant, and of course, that's why it comes to the planning board. So that's, that's as simple as I can make it. There is a similar, parallel road kind of solution as well that would be abandoning all of the subdivision except for the road or the land that is encompassed by lots three, four, and five, and portions of the road because there is sufficient frontage and sufficient area, in that case, on River Road. Our frontage on River Road is about 141 feet. The zoning in this area, it's 40,000 square foot minimum lot size, 125 feet of frontage. We could erase the lines of these plans that my client, or these lots that my clients own, along with a good portion of the road, and use River Road as frontage, or to meet the frontage requirement, and still run a driveway out to Wings Neck Road. One of my questions was whether this board had objections to approval not required plans which show frontage on one road but show access via another road. It's unusual, it's not illegal, and there may be feelings or precedent here with this board. And that's, that's really what it is. If, if this were not totally objectionable to this board, it could provide a way to solve this, this ongoing problem and never get to the question of whether or not the fence has created a new boundary. I mean, basically, that's what the plaintiffs are saying. Without going into, or starting to repeat myself, that is the, the request, that's my story, and if anybody has a reaction, I'd very much appreciate it.
That's great. I've been involved in a lot that took its frontage from a unconstructed Rome road where the accessway was not long enough to meet the frontage requirement, so I know that there, that has been approved in Born from my own personal experience. Very good. Does the board have any questions?
Is River Road paved?
Dave?
I'm sorry. Is River Road a paved road or is it kind of a paper?
Uh, River Road is a paved road.
Is a paved road.
It is paved.
Dan?
Yeah. Another place in town that has frontage on one but access on another is on Silver Birch. Frontage on Silver Birch, access on Laurel Lane, and those were built, I think, in the 80s.
Has that worked, as far as you know?
It's difficult for public safety because you get an address on one, you have to know where the access is to get to the other. That was.
So that would be an important part of this, is to make sure the fire department and emergency.
The public safety, 901.
Is how the address is.
But they, they did it back in the 80s. I'm just sort of, it's on Silver Birch Ave and Laurel Lane.
And we've been dealing with those problems ever since.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, I know about it, you know, but that's. And the other thing is, historically, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, is that we had subdivision roads put in before, and we've always had a driveway, but if you added a second or a third property, you'd have to build a road to subdivision standards. So, I mean, that historically is what we have done as well, so. I'll give you a little history, that's what we've done.
Dave?
So, could you have access as well as frontage from River Road? The paper street only serves three, four, and five.
Yep, sure you could. I mean, yes, it would be possible to do that technically, but the, the way they've always planned it was to have a drive, you know, to use the road off, off of Wings Neck, use the driveway off of that.
Corinne?
Does this property have rights to River Road?
No.
They don't have any rights to River Road, so if this board did approve it, how would you use that for access if you have no rights?
That would be access to meet zoning requirements and subdivision control. That roadway, River Road, is a plan that was also approved by the planning board. So under, under Chapter 41, it qualifies for frontage for an approval not required plan.
But it, it's not vital access.
It's not what?
Vital access. It's not real access.
It's, it would not, it would be emergency type of access, but not, I mean, somebody on River Road could object to everyday use of their road. And that's, that's another reason why the driveway would be to Wings Neck, because that they have an absolute right to. My clients have a right to use the roadway that's on the subdivision plan, even if they just use it as a driveway.
So I know that there's a court case about illus- illusory.
Illusory, right.
Yeah, access that is not real, and that just concerns me that the people on River Road, if they don't sign off, then it's not real access, and it's only, you know, it's, I understand the purpose, but that's just kind of a cloudy, cloudy thing. We'd have to research that a little bit more, if it's really real access, if we really count that. Just because it was done before and not challenged doesn't make it legal. So I, that's one concern. The other concern is, we talk about making those, merging those three lots as kind of like a trade. Aren't they merged anyway? Because they're not built, and there's.
Actually, they were merged.
Okay.
Until the state acted last fall to unmerge them. You're familiar with that?
Yes.
Yeah, they sure were merged.
Yes, yeah. But now they're not.
So now, now they're not, but you would say you would merge them?
Yes.
Now, this plan, which is hard to read, are there wetlands out there?
Oh, yeah. There are wetlands.
So are those lots buildable anyway?
We've never gotten to test that. They may be, but they may, one may not be. But that, you know, it isn't as if we're trying to do three. The most my clients had even talked about was two, honestly.
Dave?
Yeah, just to carry the discussion forward a little bit, could you have the frontage on River Road and then a couple bollards and a plastic chain so that the frontage and the emergency access are in the same location, and then informally have a mailing address on Wings Neck Road, and that's where the mailbox would be?
Absolutely. And that's what I would envision. We're not trying to add traffic to the River Road neighborhood, but to satisfy zoning requirements of a certain amount of frontage, that subdivision qualifies for approval not required frontage for what's left here.
Mr. Chairman? Dan?
The road, the road name, Captain Barlow's Lane, is that what we're going to call it? The subdivision road?
Subdivision road used to be, it was originally Captain Barlow's Lane, and says right on the plan that.
Mooring Basin Lane?
Yeah.
So, all right, so we use Mooring Basin Lane? What, what are we going to call it?
Mooring Basin Lane.
Driveway.
Okay, no, no, for, for the rules of subdivision, for Mooring Basin Lane, if, for example, historically, we've given access to a driveway onto one piece of property.
Right.
And you say that litigation through land court could take years. So if you have access onto Wings Neck Road, and you need a driveway to access the property in Mooring Basin Lane, and the frontage on those lots onto Mooring Basin Lane would give you buildability of those, of those lots?
No, it, it wouldn't. I wouldn't pretend to suggest that. If we were to do, if we were to do a driveway, looking at that second exhibit, that just stayed to the north, northwest.
Yeah.
Of the highlighted fence line, that would just be access for a single house.
Correct.
And, and there would be an agreement that says the, the lots are merged.
Okay.
But, yeah, it could be called Mooring Basin Lane, but legally, it's, it's a paper road, but it would be a driveway.
And you'd get no services down there. You'd get no trash pickup, you'd get no plowing. What I'm, what I'm getting at is.
Right.
If you leave Mooring Basin Lane on paper, and that's how you get your, the frontage and make the lot buildable, and then you just put a driveway in.
Right.
And then, in the future, whether you continue with the little land court issue or not, if you do, and you win that case, and that fence gets moved, then you have to pave the road to subdivision to add the second lot. If you desire.
We're prepared.
Or leave it a driveway in perpetuity.
We're prepared to do, just as you say there.
Yeah.
To leave it as a driveway and surrender any right to a second house lot or a third.
And then, I don't think you would need access off of River Road.
He's looking for financial purposes.
I thought you'd get it if you have.
Well, no, that's the difference here. I'm probably not explaining myself well. If we leave the subdivision as it is and just waive the construction, then there's absolutely no need for River Road to play a role.
Thank you.
You're exactly right about that. What I was suggesting is it could be a new plan that erases all the lot lines and is approval not required, but it would use that frontage on River Road to satisfy the zoning requirement for 125 feet of frontage on a road, but we would not be using that road.
It would get confusing because you'd also call it River Road, and you'd be off the Wings Neck Road.
Yeah.
And the same thing we're doing with Silver Birch and Laurel Lane.
That would be important to, to have distinguished.
Right. And I'm trying to avoid any of that, that kind of confusion.
Right. So granting access, I'm sorry, frontage on the paper road of Mooring Road would clarify that, because your access and your frontage would come from the same.
An approval not required plan would have plenty more than the 40,000 minimum lot size, plus 140 feet of frontage on a subdivision road that was approved and built.
Yeah.
But the owner, my clients, would not be using River Road.
Yeah.
And just as Mr. O'Connor, I think, said, it could be chained.
Could you get town, tell me about the sensitivity on River Road? Is, tell me about the downside of calling it an address on River Road, plastic chain, no accent, access, and mailbox, and maybe even trash pickup on River Road. Is that a sensitivity?
I would say so. If I lived on River Road, I mean, I've driven through there. It's a small, quiet neighborhood, and I'm sure the owners there would like to leave it exactly as it is.
I'm not sure they have rights to that road, even if they wanted to. If we said, yeah, use River Road, but they may not even have rights to it, even though we think that's a good idea, so.
Sorry, explain that, don't have rights.
Just because this, when this subdivision was created, the planning board had a subdivision reg that said, a lot, if you had two subdivisions side by side where you have this road, a lot of subdivisions would put a piece of grass strip there so these two road people could not access. The planning board made a law that said you can't do that, but that did not give these people rights to use this subdivision, because when this subdivision was approved, it was approved on this, this basis and not on River Road. So now, if you go back and say, oh, use River Road, they still don't have rights to that road. So if they were to modify or amend the subdivision, then all the people on River Road would be notified, and they could speak on it. But if you do A and R process, they don't get notified, and the planning board would make a decision without input of that, that neighborhood. So we can say, oh, you can use that access, but do we really have the authority to say they can use that when it was not part of that subdivision original?
I agree with Corinne. There is a difference between having frontage on a road and having the right to use that road. The two very different subjects. But it's frequently been done where there's frontage that is used for zoning compliance, which is what we're proposing here. And like Corinne also said, illusory, access would be illusory because it's not, it's not absolute. It's certainly there for emergency purposes, and of course, the planning board is, is under the statutory type of obligation to create a networking of roads within a town as you do approve different subdivisions. So this is all consistent with the authority and with the purpose of the planning board. But what I'm saying is, in this case, using River Road on a day-to-day basis is not necessary because we would have the driveway. Anyway, it's, it, something like that would, would be a possibility for solving a current problem for my clients. And I think it's also one that, that doesn't provide any, any detriment to the community. And actually, just to throw it in, where you have a potential for three lots, there would be one. Yeah, that, the law about merger has been turned upside down.
I gotta read that again. That's changed since I've been there.
Chris?
I'm sorry, late for the game, but know the area, very sensitive area, most of it's well-landed. I don't think they could get another lot in there. If it was, if we use River Road with new public safety officials, they're relying on GPS more than, because Dan and I, we grew up here, we know the roads. So if we had that, they're going to look, they're going to get in a fire truck, they're going to get an ambulance or anything and plug in a River Road address, and they're going to be lost until somebody tells them. and they're going to be lost until somebody tells them, nope, you're going to go out and around. I don't think that's a good idea.
So my point was a plastic chain.
Again, I don't think, I don't think that's a good idea. Oops, sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman?
I like the idea of put, whether it's, you know, like a paved driveway, call it Mooring Basin Lane. One driveway, mark it as Mooring Basin Lane, and then it's just strictly a driveway. No trash pickup, you know, down at the house, at the street, at Wings Neck, of course.
Like a lot of them have...
But no plowing, you know, no, no public services down that road until you were to build it out. If you were to ever build it out. And that would avoid the River Road confusion.
I, I agree. I think the frontage off of Mooring Basin Lane.
It would require doing it carefully.
Yeah.
But the plan exists. The plan exists to do it.
Yes.
We just have to grant you the driveway instead of building it out to the subdivision.
That was one of my big questions, was whether there was a fundamental objection to showing frontage in one place and actual real access in a different one. And you've pointed out the issues that come along with that, but I'm confident that we could provide careful enough approach to it so that safety, emergency people would know exactly where the access is.
Why would you have to have frontage on River Road?
I don't think you need to.
You don't?
Well, we wouldn't.
Right.
But if we, see, I'm talking about two different operations here, right? If I did that A and R that I was thinking about, we could erase the lines. See, right now setbacks would still apply to the property lines if we just leave the subdivision there. It might be more convenient to just erase street lines and lot division lines so that setbacks wouldn't apply.
You're talking about like the cul-de-sac itself? Yes, I get it.
I would think it would be cleaner, especially for the future, if we just left River Road out of the picture. Grant either a frontage waiver, then you could still eliminate the lines by A and R if we grant you that frontage waiver and then keep everything off of Mooring Basin. And I think that just would be cleaner instead of here, there.
Thank you. That, I hadn't thought of that. But that is a, that is a waiver that you have the authority to give. And that would erase any issues regarding River Road. Thank you.
I like that. I think that cleans it up.
I do too.
Tell me about emergency access at a 17-foot width.
Use the driveway.
It's the driveway.
The driveway pinches the 17 feet.
Vehicles are like eight to 10. As long as they, it's the same thing. There was a couple other we did over here in Buzzers Bay and a number other in town.
I think Dana Lane as well.
Yeah, Dana Lane was more of a...
Above the one at Sagamore Bridge, there are only 10-foot wide lanes.
They have to maintain the trees at a certain width and a certain height. So then they don't, you'd be able to get the truck down there, whereas it's just a little car tunnel.
Great idea. Thank you very much.
This is informal, so it's just a discussion, so you have to formally come in and ask for that.
I understand.
Yep.
This is a very encouraging informal discussion. I picked up some additional ideas. And this is, we're trying to solve a problem and, you know, sooner rather than later. And I appreciate your attention.
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Been a while, a few years.
It has. And Dan, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions from the audience?
There's no need to continue. This is informal discussion.
Yes, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we get into the heat.
It's multifamily.
Yeah.
It's still up there.
Yes, yes.
Next up, we have a presentation and discussion on the amendments to the zoning bylaw for the multifamily housing section for meeting the MBTA zoning regulations. And we'd like to welcome Will Radigan from the Cape Cod Commission to... I'm sorry.
Chappa.
From Chappa, I'm sorry. Welcome.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. Can you all give your own?
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect, thanks so much. So the planning board has heard you once already, but what I have in mind, thanks so much, Janice told me, is just to give basically the same presentation on the basics of the MBTA Communities Act and how it affects Borne. But before I get started, since I know most of you have heard this already, is there anything else you're hoping to get answers to or help me cover before I hop in that I didn't cover in the first presentation?
Hearing none.
Okay, then I will go ahead and share my screen if I'm able to and then go through my presentation.
Yeah, what's new? Tell us what's new.
Okay, so I'm going to go through this presentation again. Most of you in the planning board have heard this, but for the general public, this is just a brief overview of what the MBTA Communities Act is, how it impacts Borne, and a little bit about how Borne is working to comply with the law. So I will go through a summary of this and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. Before I get into it, just want to introduce myself and my organization. So my name is Will Radigan. I work for a group called the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, who are a statewide nonprofit that works to make housing in Massachusetts more affordable through research, advocacy, education, and connecting individuals and families with homeownership opportunities. For me, most of my work consists of working with local communities on understanding the housing policy options available to them and trapping them to best meet local needs. For most of the last year, that's meant primarily working on explaining the MBTA Communities Act because it is a program that impacts just about half of the communities in Massachusetts. So I was kind of pretty busy with explaining this law. So for interest in an overview of what this law is and where it came from. So the MBTA Communities Act was a law that was passed nearly unanimously by the state legislature in 2020 and then signed into law in 2021 by Governor Charlie Baker. What it does very simply is it requires communities that are near MBTA transit stations to reform their zoning codes to create at least one area where property owners can choose to build multifamily houses. And enable communities where that multifamily housing will be allowed. Communities have a lot of autonomy in choosing where they'd most likely grow. And the goal is really to cut some of the red tape in regulation in local zoning codes that have made it difficult to build multifamily houses. And just some perspective on the towns this law impacts. It impacts 177 communities, comprising just about the eastern half of the state excluding some other, most of the rest of Cape Cod. And what you can see is that in blue, that's every community that has passed a zoning district that tends to comply with this law, which at this point is the vast majority of communities, 140 communities are on a path towards compliance. And there's just a few in red that are not complying for some reason. So while you may have heard more in the news, but the communities that have in some way not complied with the law, the vast majority of communities in Massachusetts are on their way to adopting multifamily zoning districts. One thing I noticed is that Borne is in gray. All the communities in gray are what the state has deemed to be adjacent small towns, which are the smallest kind of communities that are furthest away from transit that are required to comply with this law. And what that means is that these towns have the most modest requirements for the changes they need to make to their zoning codes and they have the most time to comply. So while most of the towns in blue and red have already passed their deadlines, Borne and the other communities in gray still have the end of, have until the end of this year to go through this process. So some background on why the law was passed. It's really a law about trying to solve the mismatch between what middle-class people can afford to pay and how expensive housing is in Massachusetts. And I'll try to illustrate this problem with some local data. So if you're a starting teacher in Borne, you make about $58,000 per year in the local school district. Do you consider housing affordable if you're spending no more than 30% of your income on it? Otherwise, you're going to be struggling to afford your car payments, healthcare, education, et cetera. 30% is what's reasonable to spend on housing. So if you make $58,000 a year, you can afford to spend about $1,450 a month on rent. Unfortunately, the average one-bedroom rent in Massachusetts is about $400. And if you want to buy a home in Borne, you are looking at spending about $4100 a month on the average $684,000 home. And to afford that, you need an income of about, of about $164,000 per year. So the bottom line is what people are making on standard middle-class salaries, what they're able to pay, is not measuring up to what our rents and home prices are like in Massachusetts today. And this law is one of many attempts the state government has made to try to encourage more reasonably priced affordable housing. And it's not just a statewide problem. And it's not just a problem of people who are looking to buy homes in Borne for the first time or rent for the first time. It's really an issue that's affecting people across the Commonwealth who already live in our communities and the story is no different in Borne. So again, if you are spending more than 30% of your income on housing, we consider you cost burden, meaning you're struggling to stay in your home. And if you spend more than 50% of your income on housing, it means that you're severely cost burdened, meaning that you're at serious risk of being displaced from the place that you live. And even for homeowners in Borne right now, over 25% of people are struggling to afford the homes they're already in. And looking at renters who are paying current housing prices and not paying mortgages that are based on prices 20 years old, they're facing an even more severe cost of living crisis. We're seeing well over 50% of renters in Borne struggling to afford the places they currently live in. So this is a major issue for people across the community. The second part of this, and the second problem that this law is trying to solve is really an economic development issue. So this law was passed part in the economic development package. And that's because high home prices are causing a major economic challenge for Massachusetts. And that challenge is that young people between the ages of 25 and 44 are beginning to leave Massachusetts for places where housing is more affordable. So this graph here is showing domestic migration rates by age group. And what you can see is that while college students are still coming to Massachusetts between 18 and 24 and people in middle age or seniors are mostly staying in Massachusetts, the internet migration rate is not too different. We're seeing this escalating trend of people between the ages of 25 and 44 leaving Massachusetts for other states. But we don't have to wonder why they're leaving. There's pretty good, good data that they've told us on the reasons for why they're leaving. And we know from the most recent Greater Boston Chamber of Commerce used survey that one in four people in that age group are planning to leave Greater Boston in the next five years. And the number one in three reasons are the cost of rent and ability to buy a home. And that becomes a real economic problem as we're looking forward to the future of Massachusetts because those are people that are, who just graduated from our universities. The state has spent a lot of money on our top-notch public school system educating them. And then just as they're launching their careers, starting families, buying their first homes, they're leaving Massachusetts for places like North Carolina, Texas, and Florida where housing is a lot more affordable. And they're taking all of their skills and knowledge with them. And as we're thinking about how to power this economy and making sure we all enjoy quality services and good quality of life going forward, losing those young people out of the state really is not a great bargain. So this law is trying to solve that issue as well. And just a little more on that problem. This has become a real issue that a lot of small businesses are concerned about. I know that's true across the state. In the most recent Mass Eek Small Business Poll, 61% of businesses say they have positions that's seeking to fill. And 65% of owners say high housing costs are a major barrier to hiring. Finally, 43% of businesses say fewer customers is the major concern because people who are young are leaving the state. And so this is just emphasizing the fact that high housing prices are pushing people out of the state and that's causing trouble, not only for residents themselves, but business owners who need young people to continue functioning and providing services to our communities. So we know this law is trying to create a solution to really high home prices. But the question, of course, is how have we gotten to the situation of housing being so unaffordable to working people? And like the price of most things in our market-based economy, it really has to do with supply and demand. This is a graph of housing corruption by decade over the last 50 years or so. What you can see is that in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, we built a lot more homes than we've been building in the 90s, 2000s, 2010s. And what's especially significant is that you see in dark blue, that's multifamily housing. So things like condos, small apartment buildings, townhomes. We used to build a lot of those and that really dropped off in the 90s. And although it's recovered a bit, we're not building nearly like we used to a couple decades ago. And as we've had fewer homes coming on the market, the competition for them is becoming more and more fierce. And that's leading home prices to go up. Of course, in Borne, one thing to keep in mind as well is that the seasonal communities aspect affects home prices. If more people buy second homes, that's also driving the price of housing up. And there's a difference of solutions there as well. But there's no question all over the state, as well as in Borne, this issue of just declining home production is causing home prices to go up. Now, one question I get a lot about this is how new homes that tend to be fairly expensive can help bring down or at least stabilize home prices at a more reasonable level? And I think it's useful to draw a parallel here to another market that a lot of us are familiar with, which is the car market. So you all know, new cars are more expensive than used cars. But what we saw in 2020 during the COVID-19 pandemic is that the production of new cars basically stopped for a couple of months and took a while to speed up again as factories were shut down and there were instructions in the supply chain. And this graph here shows the prices of used cars during that period. So while they were fairly low and steady heading up in 2020, they skyrocketed when new cars stopped coming on the market. And our situation with housing is very similar. For a while, we haven't had that many new homes coming on the market. So people that wanted a more affordable home have had to look in the used market. But the thing is that people with much higher incomes who might want to buy a new home are, have been forced to bid against each other and drive the price of older homes up higher and higher and higher. So while new homes may not be as affordable as many of us hope, when we need to produce new homes into the market, that helps provide more options for people with higher incomes and hopefully will lead more homes that are older and should be more affordable to maintain more reasonable prices. So we talked about how we got here, slow home production. How does this law, which asks towns to reform their zoning codes, affect home building? Before we get into that, I just want to define what zoning means. So zoning is to set up rules that determine how property owners can use their land. That includes the shape, meaning the height and size of buildings, the distance between buildings and other land uses, and what the land can be used for, whether it can be used for residential purposes, homes and apartments, commercial buildings, open space, or industrial uses. It's the rules for how people can use their land. And right now, we have very strict rules around where you can build multifamily housing in Massachusetts. Right now, property owners have the option to legally construct multifamily buildings with four or more homes in them in only 4% of the land in Massachusetts. Everywhere else, if you want to build a four-unit building, that is illegal via the local zoning code. And what that issue does is it pushes out people that can't afford single-family homes. If it's only legal to build single-family homes, that's what gets built. And if you're looking to live in a smaller unit, a townhome or apartment, there are very few options for you. So in order to create more affordable options, we need to make it legal to build multifamily housing in more places. Now, zoning reform isn't the only solution to the housing shortage. There are a lot of other issues that are slowing down construction, like high interest rates, expensive building materials. But unless it's legal to build homes in more places, we can't start tackling some of those other issues. So zoning reform is really the first step to making housing construction easier and certainly not the last step. So moving forward to Borne's specific case, the way this law is asking Borne to reform zoning is that the town has to designate an area of roughly 37 acres where property owners will have the option to build multifamily housing of at least 15 homes per acre. where property owners will have the option to build multifamily housing of at least fifteen homes per acre. That area can be anywhere in town, as long as it's developable land. And the key thing to define here is that when Borne designates an area as part of the multifamily zoning district, it is not forcing property owners to make any change to their property. They can keep using their land the way they're using it right now, but the town is merely giving them an option to build multifamily housing if they choose to do so. And the area that Borne has selected at this point for this multifamily zoning district already allows multifamily homes to be built at a slightly lower density. What this overlay district would do would give property owners the option to build slightly more homes on their properties than would have been allowed previously. So I said that property owners have to be allowed to build at least fifteen homes per acre on their land in a MBT community zoning district. But I want to go into what that actually looks like and why the town, or why the state is trying to encourage housing in this kind of density. So fifteen units per acre is the decline of density that looks like what we call missing middle housing. And missing middle housing is everything between single-family homes and larger apartment buildings. In Massachusetts, we have a lot of each, but the middle is missing, thus the name missing middle. So that looks like everything in between, from duplexes, fourplexes, cottage courts, traditional triple-deckers, townhomes, everything in that kind of mid-size range. Now, what does that actually look like locally? It's always useful to pull some examples from surrounding towns. So what missing middle housing might look like really depends on the size of your lot. If you have a really small lot, it can look like a two-family home, like this property in Wareham. If you have a slightly larger lot, it could look like three units in a building, like this condo complex in Plymouth, which is a really pretty example. If you have a slightly larger lot, you, it could look like this property right here in Borne, which is seven units on about a half acre, so a pretty typical lower-rise apartment building. And at the larger end, it could look like this property in Kingston, which is almost a whole acre and has twelve apartments in this larger style building. So we got over what missing middle housing looks like, but what market does it actually serve? And again, via the middle name, this kind of housing is really intended to serve people who are in the middle class. Because right now in Massachusetts, especially in towns further away from urban centers like Borne, if you want to find a place to live, you really have two options that are widely available. One is single-family homes, there's a lot of them still. But to afford one, you need to make about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year to afford the monthly payment on the average six-hundred-eighty-four-thousand-dollar home. On the other hand, if you make less than the area needing income, which is seventy-seven thousand dollars a year roughly in Borne, you can qualify for a de-restricted affordable housing. And there are very, very long wait lists for de-restricted affordable housing. I don't want to say this is an easy option, but that option is available. But if you make anywhere in the middle, between around seventy thousand dollars a year and a hundred and sixty-four thousand, which is where a lot of middle-class salaries fall, there are very few options. You have to buy on the open market, and you have to buy properties that are naturally more affordable. And those tend to be these kind of mid-size multifamily properties, like townhomes, apartments, triple-decker, et cetera. So this is really intended to create more market rate options for people who make middle income. Missing middle housing also creates options for people that maybe can afford single-family homes, but for whatever reason want to live in smaller, lower-maintenance properties. So those could be people like seniors who have lived in large multifamily homes for a long time and want a lower-maintenance apartment. It can look like young adults who are single or just a young couple, and they don't need as much space. And another really common example is divorced parents who may have been raising their children in a single-family home and want to stay in the same school district, but don't need an entire single-family home for themselves. Right now, there aren't a lot of options for those people in most communities. This kind of housing density would hopefully create more options for those people. So I've gone over what the actual ramifications of this law would look like in terms of what housing could be allowed to be built in new multifamily zoning districts. But you may have heard about some of the legal cases that affected this law, or at least the legal cases that have been brought to challenge this law. So I just want to review those. The upshot is that all the legal cases that have challenged this law so far have not made an impact. The law has been ruled constitutional and enforceable several times right now. It is the law of the land. But just brief overview, the first case that challenged this law was Milton versus Attorney General last year. This happened when the town of Milton voted against complying with the law, and the Supreme Judicial Court, or to back out the Attorney General, sued them. The case went all the way up to the highest court in Massachusetts. And the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that the law is constitutional and mandatory for all MBT communities. So it's the law of the land, just like any other law. The more recent lawsuit that challenged this law was when Ducksperry and eight other communities sued for exemptions to 3A, based on the argument that it could be an unfunded mandate, meaning that they thought the state government should have provided more funds to towns to comply with the law. Again, the court ruled that the law is not unfunded mandate. Zoning updates are a regular function of municipal government. This isn't something above and beyond their normal responsibilities. And therefore, once again, the court's ruled that this is a law of the land. I think it's important to talk a little bit about what happens if Borne does not choose to adopt a multifamily zoning district at town meeting this year. The first immediate consequence is that the state is conditioning eligibility for a whole lot of grants, funding things like planning, infrastructure projects, land conservation, and economic development on compliance with this law. So the state will lose eligibility for some of the grant funds. But probably the more important consequence at this point is that the Attorney General's office has promised to ensure that all MBT communities adopt multifamily zoning districts. So whether or not the town passes the plan that local officials have put together, the courts will ultimately make sure some kind of multifamily zoning district goes in place. The law says that all towns must have a multifamily zoning district. And so the courts will ultimately make sure the town puts such a district in place, whether through fines and fees, whether through adopting a, or rather appointing a state official to draw up a compliant zoning district, or just denying the town the ability to refuse permit applications for multifamily zoning until multifamily housing, until a compliant district is in place. In any of these scenarios, we can be sure that the town will have to put some kind of multifamily zoning district in place. And so really, the best way to ensure that process stays in control of the town and local decision-makers is to go through the town meeting process and vote on something the town put together themselves. So now just going through a couple of frequently asked questions, then I've gone over all the basics. The first one I often get is how this would impact municipal finances. People worry about their wallet first. And at this point, because so many towns have gone through this process before in Borne, it's really pretty clear what the fiscal impacts would be. So far, four communities have commissioned consultants to conduct fiscal impact analyses of this law. And all of them have found that the tax revenues for new multifamily housing would exceed any additional services a town would have to provide to new residents. And so these consultants have looked at the cost for police and fire, public schools, municipal staffing, compared them against property taxes paid by new multifamily homes, and vehicle excises taxes paid by new residents. And in all four of these cases, they found that the revenues would exceed the cost. The other question I get a lot is about property taxes. And this one is not quite as easy of an answer, because property taxes will ultimately depend on decisions made by county officials. But the trend we see across Massachusetts is that towns that have seen more population growth have seen property taxes rise slower. So property taxes have risen everywhere. Unfortunately, that's just the reality of our time. But towns that have seen population loss have seen their property taxes rise the most, whereas towns with more population growth have seen slower increases. And that's generally just because when you have more people to split the costs of the same services and buildings, the bill for each household tends to be lower. So in terms of population growth, that is not something that typically causes increased property tax rates. Another question I get is what the impact of the school system would be. And this is another area where there's really not much of a cost or concern. People are having fewer children in this generation than previous children, previous generations. So we're seeing just about everywhere in the state, school enrollments decline, and Borne is no exception. There's about a ten-year trend of fewer children enrolling in the school district every year. So it's really unlikely that trend will reverse. And multifamily housing isn't likely to have much of an impact on that, because it tends to appeal more, as I said before, to older folks downsizing or younger folks just getting their star in life. Single-family homes tend to be more of a draw for families with children than smaller units like apartments and townhomes. And another question I get is, because this is just zoning, how many homes might we actually see in a new multifamily zoning district? And this is a little bit uncertain, because putting a multifamily zoning district in place gives property owners the option to build, but there's no guarantee that any of them will actually choose to do so, or there's no guarantee when any of them will choose to do so. For a new house to be built, a property owner either needs to decide they want to redevelop their land themselves, or they need to settle to a developer who wants to do that. So if a building is new or very profitable, it's unlikely the owner of that building will choose to redevelop it in any way. But if you have an older, unprofitable building or vacant lot, there's a greater chance the owner will decide to put some homes in that property. Interest rates, labor costs, and broader economic conditions will all affect how quickly property owners decide to build their properties. But I think the upshot for Borne is that because you're placing your multifamily zoning district in a place that's already mostly developed with residential and commercial uses, you're only going to see gradual redevelopment on a lot-by-lot basis over the next several decades. There's not likely to be this rush of building all at once. As individual property owners decide the time is right for them, you'll then see some of these missing middle homes being built. And just the last bit about this is that although everything I've gone over so far talks about what the state requires, the town really has a lot of latitude in what new multifamily homes could look like, or what kind of multifamily homes property owners could be allowed to build in this new multifamily zone. And so the town has control over the maximum heights of buildings. The town can control how far buildings need to be set back from roadways. It can also regulate open space or lot coverage requirements, how much of a lot a building can cover. The town can regulate whether buildings need to be screened from other buildings with education or fencing. It can require a certain amount of parking. You can also have some basic discretion over architectural design guidelines. And it can require up to ten percent of homes in new buildings to be affordable to people making less than eighty percent of their area needing income. And Borne, as far as I know, has decided to do that so far. So in any ten-unit or greater development, some of those homes would be guaranteed to be affordable. One key thing that Borne can't, Borne can't do is exclude younger families and workers with requirements that only folks above a certain age can move in. So the general takeaway here is that although Borne has to allow multifamily housing in one area, the town really can control a lot, what that housing would look like. And I know the planning board has done a lot of work to make sure it fits into what people are used to in the surrounding area. And the last thing to mention there is just that these projects, like any other projects in multifamily zoning districts, are still subject to site plan review to make sure that new homes are complying with all of their local health and safety and zoning bylaws. So I've been through a lot. That is my overview of the law. Hopefully, it was helpful to you all. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Will. Any questions from the board? Although, you know, we've seen Will's presentation, it's excellent. Answers a lot of the questions people will anticipate people have. Very good.
Yeah, this is Louis. I just have one question, which is, having watched this now several times, are we anticipating that a lot of people will feel negative about this? The reason I'm asking this is you have two slides in particular that struck me. One is where you go over the objections that other towns have had. And all I could think was, I'm going to be sitting at town meeting and people will be using these to object. That they wouldn't think of this themselves, but now they've seen them on the screen. And then the other slide, which is kind of about the penalties, seems to assume that we don't want to do this and that we lust. And I don't, I just don't know. I mean, has anyone encountered a lot of people who are up in arms about this?
I have not.
I don't think they've had time to digest it.
Yes.
Yeah, once they see it, that may change.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's kind of a fine line. It's like, you know, are you introducing a negative element that, and causing a headache that you might not have to? I don't know. I mean, you've done it more times than I. I just am putting that out there. It may just be me.
Dan?
Yeah, it's just a moderate increase in what we already allow.
Correct.
By right.
Right.
That's all.
Yeah. And a lot of the things that even are, you know, he'd state as mitigating factors are things that are already in place, basically.
Correct.
You know, so it's like, they could be even less worried.
Yeah.
I guess this is not, this is hardly new, you know?
Sure. I think anticipating some of the objections that may come up neighborhood by neighborhood. You know, if the board is doing site plan review, it may need to consider more parking as
Like last week?
The density increases, and that's within our purview. But I, I do think that at the beginning of all this, most of the media that I saw on TV were about towns that were trying to resist. And so I think Will's anticipating those with a couple of his slides, just to provide the facts that it is, it has gone to the state Supreme Judicial Court, and it is a, and it is a law that has to be followed. So.
Yeah, it's, you know, like I said, it's not, it's just something to keep, keep in mind.
Yep.
You know, don't inflame something that doesn't exist.
Sure. Corinne?
Yeah, I just have, my concern is, you know, these are private property owners that would build this. And for the market to turn around so that the supply is going to be there, it's going to be a long time out.
Yes, yeah.
And what concerns me is investors or developers that purchases properties, and now they become Airbnbs. They're not really going to serve the market that we're trying to target. Are they rentals? Are they ownership? You know, that whole thing kind of plays into it, because we're talking about first-time home, you know, owners, and we're talking about the age moving into those. So does this law really do that, you know? I think it's something that eventually can. I don't know if we'll, we'll see it. I mean, maybe we'll see it earlier than other towns, because we already have this basic bylaw that allows this multifamily. But it's just, it's just a concern to me is that, oh, we can now build all these, these apartments. They're going to make a market rate, and they're still going to be out of reach of the people that we're trying to serve. So that's just, just a concern. I'm really wondering, is this law really going to do what we intended to do? That's all.
Good point. Anyone else?
No, Dan had it. He had something? Well, I got.
Well, I was just, well, I was going to make a mention that it would be harder for, I think, the bylaw to change, to get approved if we were to do it in Katamit, take thirty-seven acres. Our downtown is always, when we pass the downtown bylaw, it was overwhelmingly approved at town meeting. And I think we're just trying to keep all that growth into the downtown, into the Buzzes Bay area. And we always said we're not going to put it in other villages.
Yep.
And we haven't, so we've been consistent with that.
That's a very good point.
I'm just wondering if we could target workforce housing? Because they talk about ten percent affordable, and that has a certain standard. Why, I think he said it was eighty percent of median income. What if we raised it a little bit and did ten percent at that level and another five percent at the workforce level? So we're serving the people that we're really trying to serve. So can we increase that on our side?
The only thing, the only thing is if we did workforce housing, would we be violating the law that the state is putting on us, which is age restriction? If you make it workforce housing, you automatically have eliminated elderly people.
They're allowing you to do, to do ten percent. And I'm talking about going higher, so it's not really, I don't know if it's really against what the state law is, but I, you know, I don't know. So it's not really, I don't know if it's really against what the state law is, but I, you know, I don't know. It's just throwing that out there.
Will, can we make it more restrictive as to the percentage of affordable?
Yeah, I can answer that question. So the way the regulations are written, you can set the affordability percentage at 10%, serving people making, or below 80% of the area median income. And you can do that without any economic analysis. You can set the affordability requirements higher, but in order to do so, you need to conduct an economic feasibility analysis to show that those higher affordability requirements wouldn't make it economically unfeasible for a property owner to build multifamily housing. I think several communities have done that. They've conducted economic feasibility analyses, and they've found that it would be realistic to have affordability requirements of 15% or 20%, and also having some of those affordable homes be reserved for people making 60% of the area median income or less, or even lower. So that's something the town could certainly do. I would say that with the time you have left, it might be a little late to do it before town meeting. But you could always come back and do the analysis next year and then amend the bylaw. And if you are interested in doing that, until recently, and I expect this will continue, the Massachusetts Housing Partnership has had funding for towns to hire economic feasibility consultants to do that analysis. So that's something you could look at.
Great, thank you. Chris?
I had two things. One was going on what Karim was talking about with Airbnbs. This might be a good opportunity for the town to get involved in setting up regulations for Airbnbs because we don't have them right now.
Right.
So that's one of the things. And the other thing I was thinking about, and I don't know if Jen can answer this, or Sean, or Will, but what if the infrastructure isn't there to support this? We have the zoning in place, but I don't think it'll happen. What if, what if the Buzzards Bay Water District said, well, we don't have any more water? We're still in compliance with the law because we set up the zoning, but we could stop saying, you know, you can't do it because we don't have water and we don't have any more.
Is that a legitimate, this is a question for Will. Is that a legitimate defense, lack of infrastructure? Or will the court say, solve your problem?
Yeah, so if, for some reason, the developer finds the infrastructure isn't there for them to build in your zoning district, that won't affect your compliance status in any way. Your job is to put the zoning district in place if not to ensure there's adequate infrastructure, water and sewer, road, et cetera, to serve developers. And so, you know, when you get more into the details of if a developer came in and they wanted to build a couple of townhomes, and the wastewater treatment facility said there wasn't capacity, that gets a little more complex, unlike who is obligated to pay for the needed upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility? Often what happens there is that the developer, depending if it's a larger project, won't want to wait years and years for the town to do it themselves, and so they'll help pay for those needed upgrades. That happens a lot. But that kind of, it gets pretty situation by situation at that point. And if it's just something you're concerned about, I mean, you should look into how much excess capacity you have right now in your wastewater treatment facility.
Yeah.
But in terms of compliance with the law, it's not something you need to worry about.
Good.
I think in the end, this is going to be market-driven. We can't make anything happen.
Yeah, right.
It's a question of whether you put on a party and no one comes. So that, that kind of goes to what percentage affordable that may take an economic analysis to say, will the market stand this? Or will someone say, look, 10% is hard enough, 15%, it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
But I think your point, Karim's point about Airbnbs is maybe you could treat that separately in terms of an owner occupancy only, or some, a little more subtle than that, but some separate regulation.
I just know that we don't have any current regulations for Airbnbs, and there were lots of discussions about it in years past. It just might be time that several boards get together and come up with some regulations on it.
Yeah, we did that for the ADUs.
Right, yeah.
Jen, did you have some other information maybe to share about the infrastructure?
I, oh, no, not the infrastructure, but I have more slides to show.
Okay, cool.
After Will.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you all.
All right.
So I'm going to continue on because I wanted to go over very quickly a few slides just regarding BORN's specific zoning amendments that will be at town meeting. And so Will has said, you know, a lot of the information in here, but if we could, we'll wait to zoom in a little bit there. If we could go to the first slide, I just wanted to reiterate and say that BORN's, you know, housing goals, which are in our local comprehensive plan and our housing production plan, is to create an adequate supply of housing that's safe, healthy, and attainable for all people of all income levels and diverse needs to purchase or rent. And the MBTA Section 3A actually encourages the creation of housing near public transit to promote sustainable and walkable neighborhoods. We can go, BORN is classified as an adjacent small town. Keep going. Yep, keep going. And these are the details. We have 11,140 homes. That's according to our 2020 data. And so to meet the minimum multifamily housing capacity is 5% or 557 homes. And the minimum gross density is 15 homes per acre.
Excuse me, Jen, is that year-round homes or just homes in general?
Just homes in general to meet the minimum requirement. There's no minimum land area requirements, but half of the district has to be contiguous. And the non-contiguous portions must be at least five acres in size. There's no age restriction and suitable for families with children, and there's no bedroom or occupancy caps. And I think as Will was saying before, that there's, the only requirement is to create the zoning. It's not to put the new infrastructure in place, and not to design or pay for new infrastructure to accommodate the housing, and it doesn't supersede Wetland Protection Act or Title V of the Mass Environmental Code. And the summary of the changes is that it creates a new multifamily overlay district known as the MFOD in the downtown area of Buzzards Bay. Multifamily housing with three or more units, and also two-family dwellings would be permitted by right rather than special permit. Site plan review is still required. The parking requirement for the multifamily dwellings is reduced from one space to one, one and a half spaces per home to one space per home. And the base residential density was increased from, oh, it's a net of 16.6 homes per acre. The model results resulted in two districts. Oh, we can go to the next. The MFOD District Area 1 and MFOD District Area 2. And they're located in between Main Street of Buzzards Bay and between the bypass. And so it's kind of in the area of Cohasset Ave and also Wagner Way. The MFOD District Area 1 is 34.4 acres, and the District Area 2 is 10.8 acres. The areas were evaluated for contiguity, gross density, building setback, height. Parcels designated as sensitive were removed, such as open space, wetland, land that's for public land, land that's not going to be built on. Parcels located directly on Main Street were removed because of the ground floor limitations within the existing zoning bylaw, which requires commercial on the first floor with a special permit, or a special permit to have residential on the first floor. The next one. So if we could zoom in a little bit to that, I don't know if it's possible. Can't zoom in a little bit, okay. So you can see on the map, the model results, it shows Area 1, Area 2, and it's a total of 45.2 acres. There is a gross density, the unit per acre is 16.6. However, when you put it written into the zoning bylaw, you're going to see the next rows down are the dimensional regulations that we have in our bylaw. Oops. So the minimum lot size is 3,500 square feet currently in our zoning bylaw in the downtown district, and that did not change. So when you put all of the modeling information in, it comes out to a gross density of the 25 units per acre, which actually will realistically net 16.6 units per acre in that overlay district. So it actually takes out all the parcels that are really not going to be built upon, but are within that district. And I think I'll go skip that one because we talked about that with Will. And I just wanted to say the benefits of, you know, the multifamily housing is to increase the availability of the year-round housing, sustain the workforce, support the local economy, and increase our housing stock. And it will provide more housing closer to places that we go every day in Buzzards Bay, such as the restaurants, the shops. There'll be more jobs, the parks here, the community building, the canal, and all the other amenities. And it will also create better access to work and services. And I want to say one thing that did come up at the Housing Partnership and Trust Meeting was, you know, being an MBTA community. And while we don't have a commuter rail there in Buzzards Bay, that is the long-term goal of the downtown district. And town meeting voters did adopt to become an MBTA community back in 2015. So this is the area that's selected.
Good.
Yeah. And then can we go into the bylaw itself? So I sent out the most recent version of the bylaw, and I can go through that because it really only changes a few sections of it. And I did, I talked to town council today, and he said the language looks good to him. He does recommend, you know, based on working with other towns, that this bylaw does go before the voters at special town meeting. He did recommend changing one small, I'm going to actually add the relative general law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A into the bylaw that it applies to that because I didn't have that in there. Do we have it up?
Jen, I don't mean to interrupt, but I know I missed a lot of stuff after every time. Is zoning now a simple majority?
Yes.
When did that last?
So with the Affordable Homes Act, it's a lot of different pages. The summary of the Affordable Homes Act is 37 pages, and that was one of the changes. That was a good change. Oh, here we go. I actually might be able to pull it up over here, and I can zoom in for the audience.
I can zoom this one.
Can you zoom in? Okay. Yeah, we'll make it as big as we possibly can.
Nice job, Sean.
There we go, even better, all right. Okay, cool. Here we go. So this is just the general article, you see it, to make the following changes in the downtown district. And also, the first change is going to be, if you could scroll right down to there. The Section 2110 types of district, you're going to add the multifamily overlay district, becoming a new district. And then Section 2410, the district purpose. And the purpose here is to create a higher density of multifamily housing in the downtown district near public transit to promote an environment that is a desirable place to live, work, and socialize. And I'm going to add in after that, the implement of the provisions are in accordance with a general law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, for multifamily zoning requirements. And then all regulations of the underlying Aladdin downtown district shall apply, except to the extent any such requirement is specifically modified or supplemented by the MFOD. So I think that covers that part of it. And then the next section, which inserts its own table within the use table. So it becomes Section 2821A, and it will be at the end of the table because it's creating a new overlay district in the downtown district. And it will permit apartment and building work and workforce housing by right with functional standards. I put in there that site plan review shall adhere to the same requirements of Section 1230, excluding the special permit criteria, and also that the provisions of Section 1600, the Development Agreement, shall not apply. Those were two specific comments we originally received from the state, from their municipal law unit in their letter. So I believe that will address that. And then the next section is...
I got a question, real quick.
Mm-hmm.
On the one that we have here, Section 2821A. It says Section 2821 should not apply to the MFOD, and you're putting in 2821A. Am I misreading that?
Okay, maybe I shouldn't, okay, yeah.
Did you say Section 1600?
Because I...
Shall not apply to the MFOD?
That's just written in the functional standards.
But why does it say Section 2821 should not apply to the MFOD when you're doing an MFOD?
Because 2821A applies to the MFOD only.
Okay.
But I don't know if there's a better way that you think that should be worded there. I think it was just to make it clear that only this section applies to the MFOD and not the other sections in the use table.
As long as town council understands it, you know, and I'm sure he does, he approved it. But I just, when I saw that, I just want to make sure that we're consistent.
Yeah, because the underlying, the underlying downtown district...
Is the 2821, not the A.
Yeah, that is confusing.
Yeah, but you're only, you're allowing the, okay, you know what?
Could say Section 2821A supersedes...
That's what I'm thinking.
Section 2821. In the multifamily overlay district.
Yeah.
Okay. That actually does make it a little bit clearer, just to say, just to say supersedes.
Supersedes, okay, I'll do that. Supersedes Section 2821, okay.
In the MFOD.
And the words...
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Just more trying to avoid problems in the future.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. And I'll also do it, I think, for, oh, you know what? Yep, that's, I think that's good. And then the next section is, this only changes the downtown district use table, and it would allow for two-family dwellings by right.
Yep.
Because if you're allowing for three-family by right, why would you make a duplex require a special permit? It just didn't make sense.
Yep.
Just a question too. I'm, you know how they passed the ADU law?
Yes.
Okay. And I know it's very complicated. I started reading, I didn't finish it. But what is the minimum area requirement for the ADU?
Oh, so it was 1,500 square feet in the bylaw that passed, but the state just changed the regulation to make it 900 square feet maximum.
So I just wonder how that compares. Now, we're talking multifamily in the downtown, but essentially, is that multifamily outside? Because you can do ADU outside. How many can you have on your property?
ADUs?
Yeah.
You can have one. The bylaw, BORN zoning bylaw, says one by right.
Mm-hmm.
I believe the state says that if there's one pre-existing that's already there, then you can add one new one.
So that would be multifamily.
Yeah, it's interesting what's changed.
How many lots could actually support two with a separate...
With the septic requirements and everything else? We don't have.
Yeah.
Town sewer in most of the rest of the town. So.
Right.
It would be required if they'd have to upgrade their septic system to meet a second or third ADU.
They have to update now, because.
Well, I know they have to update now.
As a regulation, more than one unit, you need a two-compartment tank.
So I'm thinking that, I don't think we're gonna run into that issue, uh, because of the septic requirements. We don't have a lot of, and I don't see people out on the, the necks wanting to build a whole bunch of ADUs on their acreage. That would be the only place that it could probably go.
Um, so going back to the next section.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Chris.
So I have section two, eight, three, one, A establishes a base residential density for the MFOD. And I did put in there that the base residential density in table two, eight, three, one shall not apply to the MFOD, because it's different. And it, it is twenty-five units per acre, but it realistically nets out to sixteen point six units a, in acre to meet the modeling requirements.
Now, that's gonna be the hardest part, to try to explain at town meeting.
Yes, it's.
Cause it looks like twenty-five units.
Right, it's complicated, but it really does net out when you, when you look at the modeling.
And that's where the key is, is in the modeling, and that's.
Can you just jump to the net, right, and not discuss the gross?
Um, right, you can talk about the net of sixteen point six.
Yep. Cause the, yeah, this is.
But it's gonna be in the warrant.
It's gonna be in the warrant, okay.
Somebody's gonna, somebody's going to read between the lines.
You know, there's ways around it, so you can get to it if you start combining lots and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
Catherine?
Jen, I think the way that you just explained it in the presentation was very clear.
Okay.
I, to me, I mean, I thought it was very clear, just.
Okay.
You know, so.
I'm just saying, the way it's written right here, that's gonna jump off the page, and then that's, that's gonna generate the question. Her answer's, her answer's clear.
Yeah, right, exactly. Maybe we could put that in parentheses under the twenty-five.
We can put the um, the compliance model as uh, an appendix in the warrant with the planning board report, and with the MFOD map, so that people can see it.
I think that would be a great idea. Planning board's favorable, and it's in the appendix.
Yes. We could do that, though, cause it does show it really very clearly.
Right, and then it makes it, because, mm-hmm, it would be difficult to understand.
So no changes are allowed, no changes are allowed to this document?
Um, yes, up until the public hearing.
True.
Catherine's point about adding the net right under the gross may, may reassure people. Dan's point about twenty-five units per acre is a lightning rod. Can you just, right away, talk about the net?
By law, born twenty-five units per acre by section three A. calculation for born sixteen point six per acre.
Something like, because the twenty-five is a theoretical, we're not gonna see it on the ground. It might be, it might be good to put a line right under that about what the, what the realistic number is, just so that.
Sixteen point six units calculation for the multifamily overlay district.
But that's per analysis of the properties. So like I'm saying, people can, even though it's twenty-five, like, they can combine lots, and you're gonna get that, you could get to that twenty-five. So if you say, oh, this is the gross of gross and not the net, I think you're backing yourself into a corner, because the first project out, I bet you'll be a twenty-five unit, because they'll combine lots. So I don't think we wanna do that, because I think it's like telling a false information, oh, this is what it says, but it really doesn't mean that, well, say what you mean.
It's today's calculation.
Right.
By the existing lots.
Right.
But keeping it simple.
That makes sense.
Makes it easier for people to understand and stomach what they're about to hear.
Right.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you write an explanation in the appendix, yeah.
Yeah, I think explaining it's fine, writing it in there, no.
I agree.
All right, I agree with that too, actually, now that you've explained it, I do, I agree with that. And the last part is just the parking section to go from one point five spaces per dwelling to one space per dwelling.
One guest for every ten units, so good luck on the weekend and summer.
I do have one other comment I just wanted to make.
Yeah, that's the regulation.
Yeah. We, we have to conform, you know, the contiguous lots, and can't be interrupted by a municipal that'll never even be built on. I wonder how a resident might feel if they were adjacent to this district, and they cannot sell their lot to do sixteen point six units, because, you know, we're still at twelve units per acre in the downtown district zoning.
Think we should cross that bridge when we get there.
I think no different than the person that's in it that doesn't wanna do it. You know what I mean? You draw the line, and.
Yeah.
That's why if you have property, pay attention to zoning, because it can be devalued, or it can, like, this one's gonna blow up, it's like, oh, no, I can do this.
We're gonna put your name on this one.
Well, we've always said, zoning changes, it changes all the time. And so, as you said, they have to keep an eye on it, if they have some property going down the road. You know, a lot of people have called me about the ADU thing, and I said, it's kinda complicated, but. Can you expand your septic system? What do you mean? You've got a three-bedroom house now, you've probably got a fifteen-hundred gallon tank, you're not gonna be able to build an ADU unless you expand your system. And they go, oh, well, what's that gonna cost? Forty-five thousand, fifty thousand dollars. Well, we, we've kinda figured out, adding a second two-compartment tank is, you know, a two-thousand dollar tank instead of doing the whole system, if you, if you have the leaching capacity. That's the biggest thing, is the leaching capacity. So the smaller lots, you're not gonna see this. They're gonna have to combine several lots if they wanna do it, and.
It's like the two entities are fighting, we're trying to produce housing, now border health comes up. You know, I understand safety and health and all that, but it's like they're fighting each other, you know, you try, oh, now you can do this, but you really can't.
State ought to give one more bedroom to the existing.
Yeah.
Three-bedroom systems. Just grant it.
And I just wanted to say, um, all the information is on the Town of Born website, if you go to Town of Born, go to the planning department, and it's right in the center, you can click there. There is a lot of information on the proposed changes, there's links to the state bylaw, there's other really useful links that are in there. And the public hearing for the planning board will be Monday at five o'clock, um, and then there'll be um, finance committee at seven o'clock.
So we're having a.
Two hearings on Monday night?
Special meeting?
The public hearing is scheduled for Monday.
That's what I'm saying, we're, we're having a special meeting of the planning board?
It's a public hearing, yes.
Okay. So it's run by the planning board, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Then at seven, there's a finance committee.
Just update, yeah.
Good job, good.
Thank you, thank you.
The other thing I wanna, I wanna say is, and I, and I pointed it out the last time that this was presented, is we've seen changes from when we changed the downtown zoning and everything else. We didn't see the big influx of new businesses coming in, and a lot of that was flood planes get changed and all that other stuff. When you look at downtown areas now, businesses are looking for foot traffic first, before they start building. Look at the successful um, downtowns just in our area, they're all walkable.
Yeah.
And that's what the businesses are looking for, cause we know traffic around here, especially in the summertime, forget it, I mean, even today was a nightmare for people. Getting out of school, going back and forth, there was a special meeting at the school tonight, or opening school, and people couldn't get there, because Trowbridge Road was locked up, and I was locked up on County Road, almost Old Dam Road again. And it's Thursday? In the off-season?
Much worse this year.
And it's gonna get worse, it's gonna get worse. So downtown Main Street, I think we're gonna see some growth, and it might actually be an economic boom to us in the long run.
Just look at downtown Falmouth on the weekends.
Yeah.
It jumps.
And. It's a nightmare, though, getting around. Well, it's a nightmare getting around in a car. But they have a lot of. Foot traffic. Housing, and foot traffic in the area, and they have outside parking areas.
Yes, but the parking lots work really well.
I would love, I would love to see us have that problem again, where we have to build parking lots, because we need more space for the foot traffic to go up and down and visit things, so.
That would be a great.
I think it'll be all come in time, I mean, I remember telling one of the newspaper reporters when we first passed the downtown area, I said, well, it's all done, we've passed it, now I just hope I live long enough to see it.
Right.
Kind of fruition, and we're starting to see a little bit.
We're seeing some small changes, yeah.
I think this might help us, I think this really might help us, you know, we can get the state to bring the train down to Buzzards Bay.
And if you become a vegetarian and live till ninety-nine.
Well, I've already said I'm gonna live to a hundred, so.
Well, you know that you're a hundred.
And I'm not gonna see a no-born bridge, even if I live to be a hundred.
We're gonna go to our next thing, thank you all. Next up, application for site plan review, number five oh nine A, continued from August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Zero Ernest Valeri Road.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Nathan Collins, I am Director of Engineering with NextGrid. I understand the agenda, agenda item is for zero Ernest Valeri tonight, but although our development team is working on comments and questions for, I think, the nine twenty-five hearing, I'm actually here tonight. My understanding is Daniel was asked some update questions on six sixty-five scenic, which he wasn't able to answer, that's kind of outside of his scope at NextGrid. So it was suggested that I take this a lot of time to come in and, and provide the board kind of an update on what's been going on over at Scenic Highway, if the board still allows.
Yeah, and I was there today with the building commissioner inspectors to get a look at the updates, and it's looking very good as compared to.
Wait, wait, can we hear this? It wasn't on the agenda. What if somebody wanted to talk about it? It's not on the agenda.
Good point, we did ask at the last hearing to have someone who was over the construction management to update us at the next.
So we can't vote on anything, but we can hear it.
Maybe just a continuance on Ernest Valeri till the next hearing, and then.
Great, thank you.
I can give that update.
That'd be awesome.
Uh, so for members of the board that may have not been here last fall, NextGrid received a cease and desist on the site due to a unfortunate error by a technician who was working on the battery, which resulted in a fire in one of the inverters. During kind of some of those inspections and the site visit from the born fire department, it was noted that there were some modifications made in the field. Next Grid, NextGrid presented a amended plan back in October of two thousand twenty-four, which included relocation of the battery energy storage system, a new wall on the west, I should say, a longer, shorter wall than the original one proposed on the northeast over on the west side of the property, and an amendment from a fully paved access drive around the array to a gravel access drive. Those amendments were granted back again in October of twenty-four. So since then, we've done a handful of items. We submitted for a new building permit, which included reconstruction of the existing wall which had fallen over due to poor construction by our previous general contractor. That building permit submission included the approved amended plan, a stamped structural designed plan for that retaining wall, as well as a sketch of kind of the improvements of the gravel drive that we were making. That design took two to three months, and that permit was issued to us in the spring of two thousand twenty-five. The general contractor was a contractor by the name of Zane Construction. They rebuilt that wall, they built it correctly per the engineered plans, including tiebacks and a drainage system behind that wall to help with the surcharge that originally knocked the wall over. In addition, they added about a ten to twelve-foot strip of riprap above the wall to help with, with erosion in that area. In addition, they, they made some improvements to the gravel drive, added additional gravel, specifically in the areas accessible to the battery energy storage system, in discussions with the fire department. We've also been working concurrently with the fire department on the battery energy storage permit. That included the preparation and submission of an emergency response plan. That emergency response plan was reviewed by a third-party, Pyrotech Consultants. They provided comments to the fire department, which the fire department approved. We've conducted onsite training with all of the born fire department personnel. I think it was three total days to cover all the, all the different shifts that may be called to that site. In addition, we submitted for and received a sign permit for a new sign out at the entrance, which had an address and kind of name of the facility, that's been installed. There was a Knox box that was installed just past the entry gate, which will house a copy of the emergency response plan, as well as a map of the actual solar array that will, that labels all of the PV combiners within that array. Each ray, each array row has been labeled, again, based on requests from the fire department. And there was also a map of the battery energy storage system itself that was installed at the entrance gate with a solar-powered light, so in the event that there was incident at night, that map would be lit. We are very close to having all those items closed out, the one remaining with the born fire department is a final inspection of the actual fire alarm system on the best. Ellis Fire, who was the, the third-party company that pulled the permit and installed the fire alarm system, they had a couple faults with each one of those battery cabinets, for those that may not be familiar with the site, has an aerosol can, a spray system, fire protection system that activates in the event of a thermal, thermal event. There were two, based on this last inspection, that were faulty, so they're replacing those. I believe, we had a, a meeting yesterday, they're due in early next week, so we're, we're hoping that we can get that final fire panel inspection done by the, by the end of next week. And that's the last item that is on the list associated with the battery energy storage permit with the, the born fire department. So, construction on the site itself is complete, that's really just kind of the last, last-ticket item, and Anyon, who is the battery manufacturer and installer, is doing their final commissioning of the battery system itself. Happy to answer any other questions, or the board may have?
Yeah, Jen, can you add to that a bit?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say, I had the list of the outstanding issues, and I know it's been, it's been a while. The sweat path analysis, was that provided to the fire department?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. And the, I received the fully executed decommissioning bond as well, so that was one of the last outstanding items, so.
Right, and there, actually, the one last item, the final item that I think our permitting manager missed was the, the special permit that needed to get applied for, which I believe has been applied for now, but.
Yes, that's on the next meeting.
Correct.
Yep.
Great. Any comments from the board?
I think they've made vast improvements. Once we get the fire departments okay, before our next meeting for Ernest Valeri Road, I think that'll be great, and it'll also give us a chance to go out and check it out, too.
One of the things that came up during our previous visit was the amount of washout that occurred from some of these more, you know, short-term but intense storms. And one of the suggestions have been to keep some material on-site in the event, so that if you had to do repair, it might be quicker. Is there someone within your organization that visits a site on any regular schedule to look at those infrastructure?
Sure, so this, this property, actually, NextGrid is the developer of, but we then sold the property, we sell the actual array to a company called Madison Energy. So in terms of operation and maintenance, they, they handle that post what I'd call FC, you know, once we get all AHA approvals and a whole list of other documentation that they're required to, to close out the project. So they're, they're actually responsible for long-term operation and maintenance. I'm in communication with them daily, I can certainly pose a question. It would just be a, a question of where that will get stockpiled, just to, you know, make sure we maintain, maintain access for fire department and safety. sure we maintain, maintain access for fire department and safety. We did, you know, to, to add, wasn't necessarily on the plans, but to address some of the erosion controls specifically around the stormwater basin, we did add riprap all along those slopes as well.
Did a great job.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Great. Chris?
Just a quick question. If you do sell this, will the town be notified that you've sold it? And who's now going to be the people that we knock on the door and say, hey, there's an issue?
Yes, all their contact, so they were the ones who actually conducted the training with the born fire department.
Okay.
MEI's personnel. And their, their name and information will all be on, on the gate.
Okay. So NextGrid is doing all these corrections for the misfortunes.
Right.
And now a new company is going to take it over, and then they'll be responsible for anything going forward.
Within the array. NextGrid will still own the property.
Okay.
MEI just owns the actual array.
So we're going to have to deal with two companies, one for the site stuff and one for the electrical stuff. Which is confusing, but as long as the town has information on both companies and the proper contact and everything.
Yeah, all, both NextGrid's contacts and MEI contacts are part of that emergency response one.
Okay, good. Is there a document that states who's responsible for what in that agreement with the sale of the array?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. That's part of our real estate team.
Add that to the list.
We can get, I believe we, I believe we provided a copy of the lease with the original permit.
I believe so.
Yeah, so.
I just, I mean, because we've had so many issues with the site, I just hate to see all of a sudden both entities are going to go, it's their problem, not ours. We should know exactly who's responsible for what. Who's responsible for the site? Who's responsible for the array? What their different responsibilities are so that as we all are-
Yeah, based on the lease agreement, it should have included an exhibit that noted basically everything inside the fence is, is MEI's.
Including the accessways and maintenance of those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's a land lease.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Net, net, net. Any other questions, comments? Thank you for coming.
We'll have all this information, updated information from the fire department, I think, before we hear Ernest Valeri Road. Two weeks.
I don't know.
Yeah, our, our goal is to get that permit closed hopefully by the end of next week, assuming they can, I know they're, they're busy, so sometimes it's hard to schedule them to get outside.
That's, that's what we wanted all along, was to make sure we got all that.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to continue the site plan review?
We do.
So-
Do we need a waiver?
Yeah, do you want to-
It's only site plan review.
It's only site plan? Okay, okay.
So are we scheduling two weeks from now? Continue two weeks?
Yes.
So make a motion that we continue the application for the site plan review, number five oh nine A, to September ninth, twenty-fifth?
Right.
We have a motion from Dan, a second from Jim. Any comments, questions? Roll call. Liz?
Yes.
Motion to continue. Amanda?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Corinne?
Yes.
And Jim? Second.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.